All right, I'll call this meeting of the Sweetwater County, the City Council to order. I'm gonna ask Daniel Norton with Lamar Street Baptist Church do an emigration this morning, and then have Councilman Pink lead us into pledges.
All right, if you bow your heads with me. Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for this morning. I thank you for these elected officials we have before us, and for everyone who is here concerned with the business of the City Council. I pray that you fulfill this meeting with wisdom and with discernment, and I pray that you would help us to do the work that is set out before us for this city, God. I pray all these things in your name, Jesus, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the D-Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. We'll now move to item four, which is discuss, consider, and act upon approval of minutes for the meeting held on August thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now move to item five, which is public input. House Bill twenty-eight forty, which was effective on September first, two thousand nineteen, amends the Texas open meetings act to provide that a governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on the agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding an item at the meeting before and during the body's consideration of the time. Is there anybody who wish to speak? On to the regular agenda. We will now move to the regular agenda, item six A, which is to act upon proposals on group health, dental, and life insurance, employee benefits for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. Ms. Nancy.
Good morning. As you all know, we opened the bids. You, you put out a, a request for proposals. We opened the bids, and I'm here to tell you kind of what, what we are recommending and what we, what you received in the way of bids. And each of you has a package there in front of you that gives you some information about, about what we did have. Let me just begin by saying that surprisingly, we did not get a quote from TML this year, which I was a little surprised about. We did have an inquiry from Aetna. I provided them with all of the information, and then they came back and they declined to quote. And often a carrier will do that for a number of reasons, but the, the reasons they cited were twofold, and one was that they don't write self-funded groups as small as y'all are. And secondly, they know that their discounts are not competitive with Blue Cross in the Sweetwater market, so they just declined to quote. So basically, for your health insurance, you only had your Blue Cross renewal in, was the only proposal that was presented. Page two of the package that you have shows the, the results of that quote. And if you'll look, the far left column, the blue column to the left, is the two thousand and eighteen projection. So that's what Blue Cross said was gonna happen this year, which was gonna be a, a total cost of about one million six sixty-five. If we annualize what's actually happened this year through June, you're looking at more like a million eight fifty. So you, you're not having a, a good year this year. Your claims are up considerably. But I looked back, and you all know this, and I, and I know we tell you this every year, but you've got one new City Council member, so I'm gonna tell you again. But, so in a self-funded plan, you're gonna have good years and you're gonna have bad years, and you're gonna go like this. You're gonna go up and down, but the trend is gonna be upwards always. For you, it's an average over the past nine years of about seven point eight percent, I think, increase. That's about what medical inflation is, or, or a little bit less than medical inflation. So you've probably beaten the odds a little bit over the past nine or ten years. You have not hit a home run, though in two of those years, you actually had claims that went down, but then you've also had years where they went up significantly. So it's like the stock market. The trend is like this, but the, the actual figures go up and down. So this year has not been a good year. Your claims are up about twenty-five percent this year over last year. The column, the blue column in the middle that is circled then is what Blue Cross is projecting for this year. If they're correct in their claims projections, then you're looking at a one million eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar approximately total cost for the year, which is not a significant change from what's happening this year. But the claims are gonna be what the claims are gonna be, as we say every year. We just, some, some years you have good claims, some years you don't. All that we can really hang our hat on are the fixed costs. So as you see there, your net admin costs are actually going down, five point seven two percent. Your individual stop loss, which is where the city is protected for any claim over fifty-five thousand dollars, your stop loss insurance kicks in and picks that up. You pay the first fifty-five thousand on each of your claimants. It's going up twenty-seven and a half percent, and your aggregate stop loss is only going up two point two percent. So your fixed costs are going up twenty percent, a very significant increase. So I, I went out into the reinsurance markets to see if we could get you a better deal on your reinsurance by unbundling it. And that's what the far right column is, is as you can see, this is with a company called HM. They were even worse than Blue Cross. Instead of a twenty-seven and a half percent increase, it was gonna be a thirty point four six percent increase. So I could not get you any better, any better stop loss. So basically, that blue column then is what your renewal projection is. And if you'll turn to page three, you'll actually see, this is why your reinsurance costs are going up so much and why I couldn't give you any better rates. And that, this goes back eight years, and this shows what you paid for your individual stop loss versus what Blue Cross paid out on claims that were over the stop loss limit, which in those first two years was forty-five thousand, and then, or first year was forty-five thousand, and then starting in two thousand and twelve, we went up to fifty-five thousand. So as you can see, over the course of those eight years, Blue Cross has made a profit of about three hundred and forty-one dollars on you, forty-one thousand dollars on you, which is about forty-three thousand a year. So they're not making a killing off y'all, 'cause you've had some pretty significant claims, as you can see down there at the bottom. You, you had four one-year, three, six, two, two, four, five, six. So every year, you're having some pretty significant claims. That's why we couldn't get you a better rates then. So that's your medical, your medical renewal. If you'll turn then to page four, we also asked for competitive quotes on life, dental, vision, and we got, we had one company that asked for the information and then came back and declined to quote, and that was MetLife. And they cited as their reason that they were uncompetitive in their rates, and so we did not get a, a quote from them. But we did get, of course, you're, you're with Unum right now for your life insurance, and we also got a quote from a company, and I, I'm not sure how to pronounce this. I don't know if it's Oaks or Ox Securian, and then Mutual of Omaha. As you can see, the, the Oak Securian is a very significant reduction in the rates. I mean, it's not huge dollars. It's only gonna be, you know, about four hundred dollars a month, but, you know, that's forty-eight hundred dollars a year, so that helps your budget. And then, but more importantly, then if you turn to page five on the, that's the, that's the, page four is the city-provided insurance, where you provide twenty-five thousand to each employee. Page five then is the voluntary insurance that your employees can purchase for themselves over and above that. Both Oaks Securian and Mutual of Omaha matched the current Unum rates, but if you'll look down there at the very bottom, it says guaranteed issue. Right now, you have a hundred and fifty thousand. Oak Securian is gonna go up to two hundred thousand. So that means if you have an employee who has cancer, or diabetes, or whatever's going on in their lives, right now, this first time that it's offered, we can get them two hundred thousand in coverage, no questions asked. After this year, after this initial coverage, then they'll have to complete what are called evidence of insurability questionnaires, and, and they're really not too intrusive to get more, to, to get more insurance, but when they're a first hire, they can always get up to two hundred thousand. And this first time for all employees, we can get them up to two, two hundred. That's, that is a huge benefit. Page six then are the spouse rates, and as you'll see, they also matched Unum, and the child rates matched, even though Oak Securian is actually offering up to fifteen thousand on children as a guaranteed issue, which in the past, ten thousand has been the maximum. The, the thing I like the most about this Oak Securian though is that there are no age restrictions. So right now, what you have is when your employees turn sixty-five on, on the, the group, the city-provided insurance, or seventy on the voluntary insurance, their, whatever insurance they have is reduced, so they don't get the full hundred percent. They typically get sixty-five percent, and then when they turn seventy or seventy-five, they get fifty percent. So the amount paid out is reduced, but not with this Oak Securian. So I think that's a very, so not only would they save you money in your city-paid insurance, but they, they're offered some, some better benefits. So I would, I think I would recommend then that the, that you consider that Oak Securian. I think that's, it's not a company that I've had experience with, but their niche is municipalities. And so this is what they do, and I, I think that's a, it's a very good offer. Page seven then are dental and vision. You're currently with a Unum, but the Unum dental rates were going up. We got quotes from Mutual of Omaha and Ameritas, which is the company you used to be with. I know y'all probably don't remember, but we moved to Unum last year, and I know that Lisa had a lot of problems with them to start with. Those are kind of smoothed out, but I don't think she ever had problems with Ameritas. And so, given that now the Ameritas has come back with some very competitive rates, and we're gonna recommend that you move back to Ameritas, and I'm gonna go back to them and try and get you a two-year rate guarantee. I think I can probably do that. I think they'll be thrilled to have you back if that, if that's something that y'all want to do. So those were the quotes that we received. You also received one additional quote from a New York life agent that was a whole life product, but he didn't even include any rate information. And so I felt like it was just kind of a cursory, just sending you a kind of a brochure kind of deal. Didn't really like it. He answered the questions that the, that the request for proposal had presented, so I'm, I'm not recommending that you do that. Were there any questions? I know I blew through that pretty quick.
Thank you, Nancy.
Sure.
Our options are, but really, with no choice but stay with Blue Cross, Luke Shield, Group Life, your recommendations, Oak Securian. And then of Ameritas on voluntary dental. I understand those are your recommendations. I'm going to adopt those.
Second.
Who did the second?
Jim.
One thing I would like to say is that I hope that because we've gotten this two hundred thousand dollar guarantee issue on this Oak Securian, we need to have, we need to communicate that to the employees, because that is really an important benefit that people need to take advantage of, especially when people are not, and can't get insurance in the, in the commercial market. This is a great benefit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried and approved.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you. Now move to item six B, which is discuss, consider, and act upon approval of bids for fuel, oil, and lubrication products, and hot mix, coal, lay asphalt for use from October two thousand nineteen through September twenty twenty. Mr. Jones.
Y'all should have, good morning, by the way.
Good morning.
Y'all should have a bid tabulation sheet in your packet. We can look over those. We did open bids yesterday. Everything was due by one o'clock yesterday, and we had three companies that bid, and we can go over these. On the, the first page is gonna be your hot mix, coal, lay asphalt, and Vulcan was the only company that, that bid on the materials. Their bid was eighty-five seventy-nine per ton. And you see the additional pricing. We did not ask on our specifications for the alternate materials, but these are materials that we use throughout the year, that like, if it's colder weather, we'll use the, the D-plus premix, and it's a little bit better quality during the cold, the cold temperatures, so. But we did get those, so like, on occasion, we do use those materials.
Do you know how that compares with last year?
It was two dollars higher a ton. And we pretty well figured, because we got a letter right before the, the packages come in that said, you know, their inflation and materials were going up, so we kinda figured it was gonna be a little bit higher on, on pricing. On the next page, you'll see, this is a bid for fuel, and United Oil and Grease bid the same price on both the regular and the diesel at zero point five four five five. And petroleum traders' bid was zero point five four seven seven on regular, zero point five oh seven on diesel. Which was roughly about the same as last year, almost, just almost identical, but they were flipped, because petroleum traders got the bid last year. Thankfully, they didn't get it this year. Okay, your last page is gonna be the oils, and everything's highlighted. United Oil and Grease, their pricing was a little bit cheaper than Western Marketing. Five W twenty synthetic was six twenty-five. Five W thirty synthetic was eight twenty-seven. A ten W thirty was five ninety-nine, and a Rotel of fifteen forty was thirteen dollars a gallon.
Do y'all have any questions?
The yellow highlighted is your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
How many of we accept the recommendations of Mr. Jones? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now move to six C, which is discuss, consider, and act upon the reappointment of Mr. Terry Bennett, Mr. Gil Cherry, and Mr. Keith Brock, its board members whose term expires on October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, and reappointment of Ms. Terry Blankenship, alternate whose term expires October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, on the Board of Adjustments.
Move we make these reappointments? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried and approved. Now move to item six D, which is discuss, consider, and act upon the appointment of two board members to the Sweetwater Enterprise for Economic Development, municipal development district seat, MDD, with terms expiring September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
I would move appointment of Russ Petty to fill the spot currently had by Billy Wizdant, who has declined to be reappointed. And I recommend the appointment of Jared Peake, who's a fine fellow.
All second, both of those?
Any other recommendations? Okay, got a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried and approved. Now move to item six E, which is to enter into public hearing on the two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty proposed budget for the city of Sweetwater.
Move we enter public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by amount of two hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred and twelve dollars, which is eleven point three four percent increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be, to be raised from the new property added to the tax roll this year is five thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? We have a motion to close the public hearing.
A move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now move to item six F, which is to enter into the first public hearing the proposed tax rate of point five three nine cents per one hundred dollar evaluation for tax year two thousand and nineteen. Do we have a motion to open public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This year, this tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operation than last year's tax rate. The tax rate will effectively be raised by eleven point two-two percent and will raise taxes from, from maintenance and operation on a hundred thousand dollar home by approximately forty-one dollars and fifty-six cents, fifty-eight cents, I'm sorry. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Okay, we'll now move on to item six G, which is discuss, discuss, consider, and act upon approval of ordinance amending the two thousand eighteen, two thousand and nineteen budget, and the city staff has asked that this item be tabled.
So move. I moved it.
We tabled the item.
I'll say. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm not gonna hand the ordinance into the record. We table it. Okay, we will now move to item six H, which is discuss, consider, and act upon approval of resolution on a central rate schedule for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget. Does the council have any questions of Ms. Patty Torres? Make a motion, we approve the central rate schedule.
Second.
I'd offer an amendment that we, to the motion that we strike the ten percent residential water and sewer rate increase.
Do we have a second to my amendment?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, amended. And now read the resolution into the record. Confirming and ratifying the central rate record for the various fees, license permits, and rate charged by the city of Sweetwater, Texas for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty, adopting such central rate schedule as amended. Okay, we'll now move to item six I, which is discuss, consider, and act upon ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the two thousand nineteen, twenty budget. And if you're looking, your package, it has to be made, the motion has to be made by the wording in the.
I move to ratify the increase in total property tax revenue as reported in the FYE two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget for the city of Sweetwater, Texas.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried and approved. Okay, we now move to item six J, which is discuss, consider, and act upon approving of ordinance to adopt the two thousand nineteen, twenty budget for the city of Sweetwater.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried and approved. Now read the ordinance into the record. An ordinance approving and adopting a budget for the city of Sweetwater for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand and nineteen, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Now move to item six K, which is discuss, consider, and act upon approval of appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty for the city of Sweetwater.
Move adoption of appropriation ordinance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried and approved. And I read the ordinance into the record. An ordinance making appropriations for the support of the city government for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand and nineteen, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. City Mayor's report.
Yes, sir.
What I'll do on, on the first item, the fire department rehab trailer, is I'll call Chief Madden up to walk us through. We got some pictures here on, on these other slides, and Grant will walk us through what each of them means and what this item is about.
Last year, late last year, we were called the liaison, and, and I'm only gonna say these acronyms once. If you want them again, that's fine, I'll, I'll spell them out and everything else, but the North Central Texas Trauma Regional Advisory Council, they call it NECTRAC, I don't know, built this trailer in two thousand and eight and stored it out in West Texas. Since then, all the people that knew that trailer was, was there with NECTRAC have gone on to other things. They got a new liaison with the West Central Texas Council of Governments, Angela Baker. I know some of, some of y'all know her. She found that trailer. She was like, what is this? It's a resource, it's here, what is it? She called Jim, his name is Jim, but Greg Gotch and I, she was like, you're the two firemen I know, come show me what this is, help me figure this out. So we go over, we find this trailer. It's brand new from two thousand and eight. It's a huge rehab trailer, full of stuff. We pull it out, some of the stuff obviously is expired, alcohol preps do not last, yes. There's, there's, it was completely filled with brand-new equipment. There's a five-ton generator, go to the next slide, I think. Well, you can't really see it, it's covered up, but it's got pile, cots, chairs, refrigerators, fans, coolers, a humongous tent. They're stacking the flooring right there, the, it comes with flooring to put down in the tent, around the tent. I think you could pave a street with this stuff, there's so much of it. Anyway, all of this stuff has been sitting there, they needed somebody to take it and use it and make use of it. We volunteered, we were happy to do it. There are numerous fires that we've been to that we don't have rehab. We don't have, you know, Red Cross comes out of San Angelo or Abilene, if you can get them, and, and they're great when they come, but they're hours away. The cots are fully adjustable, they have IV poles. The, the thing that I see this being is a regional resource, that's one of the things when they agreed to give it to us, and it does belong to the city of Sweetwater now, is that if, if we are not using it and somebody needs it, if we can staff it and take it, and I'm hoping that it'll be fully staffed by three people and set up and deployed, that's the whole reason behind this, it's super easy to put up, super quick, and, and can serve many, many people with just a few of our people, but if we're busy, somebody can get it and take it and use it and bring it back. When we were deployed to Harvey, one of these set up right in the staging area where we were, I think I'm saying it, Ratacasita, had one, and they had the full-blown, because they get called often to have rehab, they have large fires in the, in the Houston area, you know, big complexes. They had as far as a physician's assistant in theirs. I'm not gonna go that far. We'll have a paramedic and a couple of EMTs if we can staff it. But it's a humongous resource. It's taken us a while to get everything rolling. We, we took it out, once we figured out that it was actually gonna work and we were gonna get it, we pulled it all out and we plugged it all in and played with it. The generator, it has a two-twenty, three-phase generator that never had oil in it, or gasoline. We had to replace the battery, 'cause the battery was eleven years old and swollen and bad, but everything works. We've got one big connector problem coming off the generator going to the, it has its own power distribution grid, which is really amazing, all the stuff that they put into this. One of the connectors was the wrong sex, it's two males stuck to, that, that don't work together. We've ordered it, it's supposed to be here soon, other than that, and the, the tent, the tent that they put in it, we tried putting it up with eight people, we couldn't do it. Eight grown firemen couldn't put this tent up. Eight grown firemen couldn't put this tent up. It was too big, too heavy, so we opted for a much smaller one, they found a used one, they're supposed to be sending it soon, this truck, trailer should be operational within the next month or so, we're hoping. So, any questions? Any North Central Texas Trauma Regional Advisory Council gave it to the Big Country Healthcare Coalition through the West Central Texas Council of Governments. His name is Toby Harbuck.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Moving along, the, the dam inspections, we got reports back from, from our partner EHT on each of the three dam inspections in the last week or so, so we're reviewing those, any type of recommendations that EHT would have made, we'll sit down with Eddie and, and his team with EHT, and we'll see what we can, what we can do as part of, of that, that process, but it, it was a good process, you have to undertake that occasionally, every once in a while, just to make sure that your dams are holding up and not falling apart and all that kinda stuff. So did wanna pass that along to the council and the community at this time. The emergency management tabletop exercise, remind me, Eddie, when that is coming up, is sometime later this month?
It's Thursday, September twenty-sixth.
Thursday, September twenty-sixth, it'll be at, at nine AM at the, at the water plant, so we'll, we'll take part in that tabletop exercise. EHT is also helping us with, with that, and we'll have, we'll have a bunch of folks, emergency management types at the tabletop, just to, to run through the exercise, to make sure we're ready, when something does happen, we won't be caught off guard with it. The landfill update, some good news on that. TCEQ has come by recently, and they're working on a final report, just to make sure that everything is, is what it needs to be at the new landfill site, the new type four landfill site. Once we get that back, that official word back from TCEQ, which we, we anticipate is gonna be a thumbs up, then within the next thirty to forty-five days or so, we'll be able to open up that new type four landfill site east of town. And so we're very glad about that, we're finally getting to the, we see the light at the end of the tunnel, and we hope it's not a train, like they say. The new City of Sweetwater website, we, I mentioned that last month at, at our meeting, we do have a mock-up of it here for, for everybody's viewing pleasure. We're looking at, at a few slight changes in, in the colors that we've, that we've chosen for the, for the final website, but we're still looking at an October first or so release date on that, to get that out in the public. There you'll see the mobile version of it right there, where Zach's, Zach's stopping on it, so that you can, you can access the website on your, on your mobile device, that's kinda how it'll look, and if you can go back to the top, Zach, that's, that's pretty much how the homepage will look. Like I said, we'll have some, some color changes on that, the red isn't quite what we need it to be, but it, it is a vast improvement. Many of the websites that you'll see for municipalities around, around the state, around the country even, have this particular kind of look. Our, our current one that we have right now is, is, is a lot different, it's, in my opinion, not user-friendly. This one is a lot more pleasant to look at, it's gonna be more user-friendly, a lot more information on there. Cities websites are typically the, the front porch when somebody's coming to look at what Sweetwater, Texas is all about, along with the chamber, along with our case, the seat MDD, but a lot of the folks come to the city's website as a, as a first stop, and we wanna, we wanna show that off and, and everything that's, all the good stuff that's going on here in Sweetwater, we want that readily available for people that are looking for that type of information. And Mr. Mayor, that is all I had this morning.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, now call for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.